Trying to tell people spatial expressions that, you know. Good evening, I am so happy to be here at Berlin and I'm ready to get to work. Ready to build relationships, ready to impact the school community for kids and do great things alongside of some of the wonderful staff members I've already met and get to know the rest. Ready to go. So thank you so much for believing me and I'm ready to build a vision and the mission of this school. I'm Wesley, my daughter Evelyn, my husband Mark, I have my father and my mother-in-law Carl and Lorraine Ronell here all supporting me in this adventure. So, thank you for having all of us here.
Any discussion on any personal items? Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Along we have exciting is the MOA and the CS. Questions on the MOA? Back to them, motion for the MOA? You ready to vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I will always start talking about reserves as other projects. Talked about pavement coming into the high school. We were talking before just, just any other points, we're talking about fixing some of the pavement in the entrance to the school.
Yep, and so the pavement, paving in the high school parking lot, that was considered and also we were looking at the irrigation, the wells. That is all part of this, in a way it is, but we're accounting for that. In addition to any movement that we would make, that is already accounted for. As Karen got an estimate for how much the paving plus the wells would cost, and we have those right now and those are already encumbered, Karen? Okay, so we are going to encumber them from this?
No, not at all. The reserves money that we're talking about is not appropriated fund balance, you cannot spend it that way, you cannot encumber it, you can't do anything with it, it's not a part of your budget. You have to either move it into reserves or, you know, utilize it in that way, you can increase your unappropriated fund balance, which we did this year, those types of things, but it's not part of your budget. You can't, however, we have accounted for those things as, as Joe was saying, we've accounted for those things in the next year's budget utilizing that ARPA and SIRSAM.
So the money that reserves right now, where is it?
It's in the budget. Which money? What are we talking about?
The money that we're going to put into reserves, where is that money now?
That's in the bank, it's unappropriate, so therefore it does not, it doesn't show as part of our budget.
Okay, so what I'm asking is, we have money to fix the pavement?
In next year's budget, yes.
Yes. Wells are something that will have to be done actually.
That's correct. We've got an estimate, we're going to hold on it, because I mentioned Karen and Cyril, we're going to get an estimate, but we're going to first wait till Reifenberg fixes the problem and then he take ownership and that's when we're going to be considering those things. But right now we're not going to be drilling wells, we've got an estimate.
Okay, so maybe the parking lot's taken care of, I think that's an assessment here we do.
Can I bring up something in conjunction with that?
Yes.
If we're looking at doing the paving in the parking lot, one of the things I mentioned in the past was the need for better lighting in the parking lot. The lighting that you get is, you know, streetlights glaring and there's no downward light and there's no real illumination to outline the curving. It's particularly of a concern when the days are short and it's dark early and people are leaving from games, et cetera, ice parking lots. I'm just concerned if we're looking at doing something to the parking lot, is there a way to put in, you know, three, four, five downward lighting along the curb in some way?
Let me look into that. In the island there, put in the driveway in the parking lot, because when you walk out, it's in your face, walking is in your face with downward lighting, you walk to, no lights in your eyes.
Right, and then it's very dark, there's no reflection on the pavement, so.
And I understand completely what you're saying, when I leave at 10:30, it's quite dim, it's.
Yeah, it's very dark.
It's very dark unless you're right under the lights.
I know personally myself, I have difficulty dark on dark, and I'm sure a lot of older people do as well, so I think it'll just pay us off in the long run to avoid any sort of issue, anybody tripping and falling, you know, claiming there was inadequate lighting.
Absolutely, and I'd like to mention it, I wrote it down, there's a couple of things I'm thinking right now about safety in terms of both our buildings. So in the capital project, we're putting up cameras, but the door access, which is the keyless door access, we're only putting on the main entry doors. And that is a big concern, so I give a quick example, if I went to lose one of my master keys, we will have to re-core all the doors that that master key can access, then take back keys from other people, give them new keys once those have been put in. In the meantime, anyone who has a hold of that key can physically enter the building. In fact, Karen and I have both found that many times the door, which is over there, and entry into the building was unlocked by someone but never locked. These are safety concerns, the way to move around it is to put in those keyless entries into all our doors, and I spoke with Schoolhouse as well as Synthesis today, and they said it will not be much of an extra cost. Because they're already putting in the programming and the software for that, so that is one example of how to make it safer, the downward lighting, I completely agree, it's another way to make it safer for our students and staff. So I'm taking all these ideas and we will be approaching these, maybe as part of a smaller capital project in coming years, that's when we can do all of these, but I completely agree with it. It is a trip hazard and it is a safety hazard for someone walking out at night. It's absolute.
On the sidewalk pieces too, or is that just the pavement?
Just the parking lot, that's what we're doing, so when Frank has mentioned paving, we're just doing the loop, bus loop as well as where people park, so that's what we're going to do.
Well, that's why I mentioned the lighting, because you have to run wiring to it and your paving, you don't want to do that, how much of an expense that really would be to find the money before they pay for it?
Question is, do you file pavement after all the tanks are red and all the construction is done? Yeah, yeah. So we're probably looking to cut squares out and fix just the iteration portion, not doing the complete loop.
Well, we were thinking of doing it after. Then doing the loop as well as.
But I think some of it needs to be cut out this summer where it's breaking up and the buses keep coming in, because it'll just get excessive puddles and they're just coming in with a saw, they cut out a section and just repair that section. So you're not putting the buses through it.
All right, no, I agree that's a good idea.
Just patch repairs so.
But right now and then.
And then do it once all the construction is done.
Sorry, I was talking about that. I've never seen kids strip and walking around, remember, that there's no way that we can squeeze something in there?
Well, probably if you only got one pad, it needs to be placed in.
Sidewalks, doing some work on the sidewalks to the right.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's just the, yes, there is some work to the sidewalks and then the curving, but I think it's the X, and I think where y'all talking about is like straight across the front, is that where you're talking about?
Yeah, across from the main entrance.
I, I just can't say exactly.
Let me do this, let me write it down and then we'll see if that is something we can address at the same time that contractors here anyways.
There's probably one, about 25 feet and once about the usual.
Yeah, and I know exactly.
We're carpet over to prevent. No, we talked about it several years ago too, and it would be nice.
And then, you know, a couple of things we've got to take here, one is in winter, the water drips and then it forms ice over there, and so that is something else that we're also fixing, so there are a couple of things. But I've written down, you know, broken down pavement, because while they're fixing pavement, they already have the piece there. There is.
There are taking hazards.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm with you on that.
Then when we finish paying, then we. Yeah. Okay, the next item is, we're all the way in there, where can we get the funds for that?
So the pavilion funds, the, I just sent an email, the park limit is, we're looking at 165, but most likely that'll be much lesser than that because the price of number is going down as well. And Karen, isn't this pavilion in actually similar to the?
So what we're hoping, they haven't put out all the rules on the SIRSAM and the ARPA money, but we have, well, there's capital project money in there, and especially seeing as we're going to market this as a learning space, an outdoor learning space. So our intention is to put it in that same grant money, I don't know that we can, but hopefully we can, and then if we can't, we do know that his salary, my salary, his salary can all go in the grant, which then frees up money in the budget to do the building. Unless you want to add it to a capital project, because that, that would be the only thing, is that if we use budgetary appropriations, it's not aidable.
My intent is to get approved and get it built because I've been tortured last year of state and sidewalk time. And if we get into another round of this COVID, and we have to have masks, I think the parents would really appreciate some relief to these kids. So I'm looking to get it approved and get it built and be ready for next fall.
So we can get it done finally, we can finance this, we can definitely get it done.
Stuck basic, if the stuff done, it needs to be done, then to put it up is a quick assembly, but I agree to go with the maintenance free material that it doesn't corrode or deteriorate. It sounds like you know that you put once and once forever.
Exactly, which is why he gave us the best estimate, 165, most likely it's going to be less than that, but what it will do is, it'll allow us to build it. For an outdoor learning space for us.
Let me, another item?
Is, is, I don't see it in the picture, but is there bench seating or something moving that? So, what do they do?
We'll get benches, you know, just like we did this year.
You had the email I sent you, you know, in phone, which showed different style, not up on tiers like this where it's flush to the ground, and then tables would be walking and it's flush, have to raise one like this.
Yeah, I know, I'm just questioning.
We'll send you that picture there, I sent it to the board.
Yeah, I'm just questioning seating.
Seating, but.
Because, I mean.
Tables.
Yeah.
It'll be nice and solid, the rest they would also put hundreds there.
Yeah, I don't even think necessarily kids could go out with clipboards or something, no, I think it's more just a seating so they're not on the ground.
Want to maximize the use.
I mean, you could have, you know, portable tables that could be, you know, brought out by.
And I was saying, you know, like if home insurance, picture laid out, plan, no trip hazards, none of this. Park style. There's kind of towards, doesn't clean it. But we have all the finances taken care of, Sherry, you talked about.
I was just going to confirm that we can be for our monies for the cross-country trail.
Yes. And in fact, Chuck and I were just talking to the phones, Chuck, you're going to be doing a walkthrough, right?
I'll be with Gene tomorrow.
Okay.
And our cross-country project, we'll do a walkthrough of trail.
Oh, Sherry, do you recall a year plus ago about having someone design cross-country trail to integrate with that everywhere?
Yeah, I had Gene give the information along to Sammy and Sir Angelo, and I don't know what happened after that, but Gene had given him a name that would design that. I also know that Gene has offered HMA's equipment at no charge to us to do the work, providing that the materials will be paid for, so.
I guess there's two meanings here, one, maybe Chuck, you'll answer that when you do a walkthrough, do we repair this one or do we have to redesign the whole cross-country trail?
I think the plan was to keep this part as it is, but we will need to definitely, because half of it was taken out of the track. So this, this side over here where the track is, it will need to be redone, but I know that we talked about tweaking some of the things. And Trevor, you, Trevor actually was one of the parents that helped us out a couple of years ago, was it two years ago? Yeah, there's, the biggest piece there is the roots, I would say, and the width of the trail, that would need it's worn.
It's very steep.
Right. So.
I agree with that. Once that does the walkthrough with Gene, they're hoping to identify with the water, which is kind of each done, and then we can come up with all.
Right. Yeah, and I think you're going to have Coach Vine or walk through with you, because I think that's, he can tell you right where the trail was. And parts of that, and I think if he's there, he'll be able to tell you exactly what needs to happen. Yeah, I just want to get it done, I just want to, I mean, it's been two years, I mean, we've got, we've got sectional champions, we've got, you know.
I have a question to make sure that we can't shake stuff that's into the big picture of where we're going to end up. Let us know that, it'd be great. Well, I think the pavement department, the lighting, island, down spot, I think helps save the trip hazards. And I do notice when you drive in here at night, you're looking at the building, the light is right in your eyes. I don't think it's a big cost, but I think, I go down in the town, we got rid of the big lights in the building, we pull out there and one folded, you paralyze, I'll eat. Drive in, everybody can see it or something in their eyes. He was saying, I think it's important, one of the things you can look at, I did take a tour down at Berkshire Farms, I think it's all keyless entries. That gives. Put the readers behind the glass. So the readers were never exposed out in the elements, and they have just touched it by the glass. What was in behind the glass, because if you put readers outside, they'll probably get knocked off. And that's what they came up out there, so kids couldn't destroy any readers.
What do you mean?
No, no, the glass windows, next to your walk-in doors.
Oh, okay, I was on the inside and then I was like, what type of glass did you?
So you're walking indoors, when you go into, the reader would be behind the glass and it goes through the glass, and it never got destroyed after that. You gotta go to these facilities where they're tough.
It would be nice to, you know, I, these are things that we've been talking about for several years now, all of these things, the keyless entry.
All of these prioritized, you can take care of the heavy lifts, now we're getting down to the light lifts, assuming head on it.
Right. Be nice to, nice to just.
Or get taken off of this.
The stuff we need to recover, we've got. Management in place to take care of it. Now we're talking to. ERS, ERS, very reserved.
And if we have capital project reserve, we can go over this. So there is one, yeah, these are the new ones, we're establishing ERS, ERS and the fair, and then transferring monies to the reserves, based on this spreadsheet that we've seen. So I can go over it? Okay, so when we look at capital reserve, right now we're at $0, because we've spent all of it in the upcoming capital project. So we are authorized to put in a million dollars, up to a million dollars a year, as long as we don't pay the 5 million miles. So we do have a lot of room left, because we've only put in a million dollars so far in the capital reserve. So that was $1 million into the capital reserve to be used for the future, when we look at all these items that were mentioned. Going down, we look at the ERS and the TRS, the retirement reserves, we do not currently have a retirement reserve and these are unpredictable. I'd send some examples to the board where they're under by as much as seven or eight percent in the year, and that can have an impact on our budget, it is advisable for us to have these reserves. For the TRS, it has to be eight percent of the payroll that we give for teachers, so that's where the 200,000 comes from, the ERS does not have a limit. Now, we do want to put more than that amount in the ERS, but we cannot do it this way. However, by putting the 2 mil in the ERS, we can then in future years also transfer that to the ERS, build it up. Yes, yeah.
Withdraw and transfer. Can we transfer out of the ERS or TRS back into the general fund?
There is.
Let's see, look it up, there's the second sheet, which is about that, ERS and TRS, so.
I think we asked this last time.
Yep, and basically what it requires is transfers from or back to other reserve funds requires a public hearing with a few days' notice. And then this is not required when transferring between ERS and TRS, so we don't have to do the public, and then that's it. So basically, we just need to have a public, yeah, put in an announcement for a public hearing and.
My question is, are there, or yes, maybe you have something else go there, the district, that money?
Yep. We can take it out, Frank, it says, you know, there is no limit to the duration.
Can I ask Karen?
Yeah, well, and truthfully, you know what I lived on very closely, and ERS is one that gives us the greatest amount of freedom as far as what we can do with that money, where we can, how we can spend it, and where we can transfer it into, and things like that with the least restriction.
I was saying, I was going to say, you know, all of a sudden, like, I understand, I'm going to cut you 20%.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly, or something one year.
I'm sorry, I'm listening to the D E A. So just be careful on that, the look backs, the COVID pandemic out of the area right now.
Worker's comp, can you pull out of that one? Probably not, that'd be the one question as well.
I was actually just going to pull it up right now.
We pull out of all these, we all, you can't pull out of the capital.
So the workers comp, the reason for increasing the workers comp is that our workers comp is actually underfunded right now, because you're supposed to have this certain amount, like it, it's kind of like the whole OTEP thing, if the whole thing goes under, they have an actuary that does a number that says this is how much you'll owe on what you have open, and ours is around 500,000. And our workers comp reserve is underfunded at 100,000. Yes. Unemployment is just what's been going on with all the unemployment scams, we still have to pay them, we've been reimbursed, but we still have to pay them, plus the fact that nobody wants to work right now, so.
One question is, if the parking, can we pull it out?
I don't know the rules, let me pull that up, did you, you have that?
Yeah, I'm reading, I have the restrictions. Excess funds remaining at end of school year may be transferred within 60 days of the, close of the school year to other reserve funds or applied to budgetary appropriations for the new student. So then just to, you know, do that and be invested.
That's a lot of money.
One of the things, you know, I did mention to the board was, you know, that we're going to use the wisely, and we are going to make sure that our funds and our reserves have a good amount of money in it. And then next year onwards, you don't need to worry about this because we have a good amount of money in it, so we can then use excess amounts we get for other, in other ways, you know, if there is any savings next year, you can think of other creative ways to use them. Including looking at the tax levy, and seeing, you know, if we should lower the tax levies so that our community has a smaller increase, a smaller increase in the tax levy and so on. So we can then get creative, because by, by doing this, our funds and our reserves are in a good place, which puts us financially in a good place. So, so in this, I'd like us to think of it in terms of a long-term perspective where we do this now, but now we're good for many, many years financially. And any savings next year, we can then think of our taxes.
Now that you mentioned tax levy. Money to reduce the tax levy increase to 1%. Or.
Yes, sir.
Set the tax levy in August. It's not in the past, but we changed the tax levy appropriate money in the past to reduce the tax levy in August when we set the tax.
You would have to, it requires a vote, it's part of the budget.
Part of the vote. But in the past.
Reduce the tax levy?
Yes, instead of going out to the full shot, we buy more money to it, because at the year-end, when you clean out, you find out you got more money than you expected, and, and most part of it was tax payers to try to all relieve.
So I, I don't know, I just don't, I'm not familiar with how we would go about doing that. Increase your appropriated fund balance, but that's voted on, so I just have to look into it, Frank, I'm not familiar with that.
That's what I'm looking to do, so when you cut the tax levy in August, set it 2%, put it 1%, because of a lot of, a lot of variables this year, with all the reassessments, I don't know what the equalizations rate is going to do. Some communities may get hit with 10, 15, 20% increase. So in August, I know we've done it, set the tax levy, appropriated more money in the past to reduce levy. While I can currently cover that money, then figure out what the mechanism is, I do believe it's possible, done it in the past. I'd like to incur, cover that money, then figure out what the mechanism is, I do believe it's possible, done it in the past.
I'm gonna send an email over to Sarah Morris to cover it, and see if she's familiar with how we would do it.
I've heard a minute in the past year. Free state, because it's hard, vote to the public. Make your budget vote because you haven't done your year of cleanup yet, and all of a sudden you find out have a lot of money, like we do this year. Well, you're more than doubling your reserves. It's not right to go out and do the full wham, taxing this. So. That's what I'm looking to do in August, is cut it back one percent. What would one percent do?
Uh, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I think our tax increase was about a hundred and seventy-two thousand, so split the difference there.
Post nine, eight-five nine. I would call it all. Many variables.
So if, if that is possible, I'm just, if that is possible, then some of this money would not be available for reserves, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, it's eighty-five, ninety thousand we need to find.
Well, so the money that's left over that we're proposing adding to the reserves for next year, I'm assuming that that's the, um, extra money we have.
Yep. One point.
Right.
It's part of it, Kelly, because we haven't closed out this budget yet, and these are estimates, that's why they say up to. And it's really going to come down to once we actually, you know, have closed out, to find out exactly how much we have left over. But I, I have no fear that, you know, we, we could find the additional without.
Right, so I guess my question is. Um, how do we vote on transfer of funds to reserves? And with specific amounts, if we're looking to do that and we don't know.
No, they're not specific amounts, they're up to amount, and that's exactly what we're all.
So we could, we could take a little from each one to make up what Frank is suggesting and then. So our vote is just to approve them up to, right, okay.
Yeah, so when you say up to one million in capital reserve.
But I didn't know if that was a.
Yeah. Well, that's a good question, because it is, you know, those numbers, I didn't, it's up to them. And, and this swing in the numbers, there's no reflection of anyone's, how they're doing their job, no, because everything is so dynamic. Roles change, things change. And everything is fluid, so up to is the way to do it. Like I said, I'm looking through, try to over leave that you have this much in reserve, and shit, we own a whole thing.
And we, we did, you know, take that into consideration. So that will, that will come in, in ours, in the levy.
But I. I will get ready for it. Now, is there any other questions on any of the reserves who have our two amounts? Unappropriated fund out. Or a reserve fund out, appropriate fund out.
Hopefully, we were almost at the people's end. Because we did not know how much expenses would come from COVID thing in the pandemic, and that's why, out of safety reasons, district had more than what we. Also, you know, and so this year, we, as we noticed, you know, we were trying to bring it down, so we brought it down to six point eight. So we tried to bring it back to the four percent, but we're also progress in the right turn of the delta variant. We cannot just write, write it off, pandemic is still on, it's not over. We want to be a little safe, so we, instead of going all the way to four percent, let's build six point eight. Because the last thing we need is, as Frank mentioned, Auburn says twenty percent withholding. And then we have to find the money, so. You know, it's fiscal stability point, yours and group's, so.
One of the areas, one of the areas, the town now.
Yeah, because we need voter authorization. And do that next year, once it's been established, we can put money into it next year.
That has to be a referendum, it was, was a repair reserve?
Yeah, voter approval is required for the fund. So we want to put five, close to uh, five hundred in it, in case of emergencies that come up. But we cannot fund it. But that's why we're establishing it, and then in May, we will have it as a proposition. For the voters.
If you can't fund it out of what we have left.
Yes.
That's going to be a taxpayer cost?
Kelly, you can have a fun with that, but taxpayers have to approve.
Okay.
They have the curvy amount.
Yes, so let's say next year we have some other savings. And we decide, okay, you know what, we want to move a hundred and fifty thousand into the reserve. And that will go forward as a proposition. And, you know, that's what they can move on, up to a hundred and fifty thousand. And then depending on how our year ends with the savings, then we can take that amount and put up to that amount. But yes, it does need voter authorization, put money.
But we don't for the ERS and the TRS?
That's right. That's, it's, it's so complicated, it's like every reserve is unique in its way. How it is established, that's why.
I was just trying to understand the difference.
Your question, I got it. Reserve must be repaid at equal installments over the next two years.
After you use it.
Yeah, so, so let's say we put a hundred and fifty in it, and if one year we had an emergency because of the news. Of the, of the hundred and fifty, then over two years, we have to replenish that.
What happens if you can't replace it?
Um. I would agree with that. Oh, so reserve must be repaid in accordance on the next two years if expenses are made without holding upon the period. Emergencies can request to purchase majority vote on, but even notice required five days in advance of the year. Um, unneeded balance, maybe transfer to capital or retirement. So what they said is an if statement, so it must be repaid if we use the sixty thousand dollars without holding a public.
So I should have a little public hearing if you don't have it.
Make sure we hold a public hearing.
And that, I don't know what ties the key to the project.
No.
Time to put it in there if you don't have it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We talked about establishing it before, talked about a repair reserve, so that's all this is, just establishing it. And then you have time, you have time, and you know, uh, Joe and I spoke about waiting until the budget vote. Um, and that's when you would, you know, put forward a, a, for the proposition, if you want to fund it. If you don't want to fund it, you don't have to, once established, it's just, if you want to, you have to have the voter approval.
It's been loaded, then it's been funded that year or three years down the road, it's been a first.
Yep, there's no limit to how long you pass. And it also goes back to some of the things, you know, that Sherry brought up, like when things break in our office, when, when you look at cross time. But something fits, that, that fits things, now we have that prepared reserve. In terms of the board majority vote.
And I'll, it could be a public hearing.
Well, yeah, we will do a public hearing, yes, yes. And our student emergency, yes.
Then we go to secret.
Yes. So there's only five days notice.
A public hearing if you're done, at the end of a morning.
Yep, five days notice.
Is there any question on all the reserves? I, I have a poll here for the E S and T. Second, very, oh, yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Number H. Motion to approve construction over here. E S, million, hundred, five thousand dollars cap.
Yes.
What's that? Okay. Starship in twenty twenty-one. I have that question. You ready to vote?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Um, question, doctor one is, I don't believe we can wash the buses outside, have no containment area. We can't contain it ourselves, so looking at these lifts, these are strictly indoor lifts?
Indoors, and they're used for, we can focus this, we have just one lift, I think, our three buses. And this would, if something happens to that lift.
But magnets will be indoors?
Yes.
So these are indoor lifts only?
Yep.
The other question, um, talking to Rachel. Question of who's going to service these lifts. This company does not have a good reputation.
There's a, there's a big problem with getting mobile lifts. I know, because I have two of them in the shop at work, and there was one company, and you can't, you can't get them to come down. Garage doctor, which I, I think Reagan spoke to, um, they were out of business, they, they don't, they're doing strictly heaters and stuff now. But they'll send you to someone that will service these lifts, um, and, and they're good lifts, that's not the problem, because they're not. He uses them, yeah, the service ability, using them outside. It, it's a safety issue too.
Yeah, we, we can find it, we can move.
Right.
Um, and Rick had mentioned someone in South River Springs.
That's garage doctor. That, from what I understand, is out of business.
Okay.
Um. Did he look at any other lifts besides Mohawk?
Yes, he did, he thought that two lifts, one was Mohawk, the other was Stein, I believe. But he said, and in the email that I've sent to the board, uh, both those were there, his preferred is Mohawk lifts. Because, as you mentioned in it, has good quality.
Right, the quality is excellent with them, just, he can enter.
The other one, yeah, the other one, uh, is Stein. Um, and he can live with either one. Uh, he can live with either.
He have a specific reason to do it?
Yes, yes, let me find it, you know, I'm saying.
What happened, I know his whole idea was putting a pan out tonight and using it to wash the buses and.
We're, we're not going in that direction.
That's a good.
Because, because of concerns, not a valid concerns raised, we're not going in that direction. We will use this for maintenance. And that's what we're doing, so I found it, so let me scroll down to where the other one is.
While you're doing that, can I just ask a question? So how will the buses get washed?
So. We have been washing a hundred of these buses.
Oh, just to be, we're talking about the.
Yeah.
But the regular washing of the buses? Okay, and that's not an issue? Okay. It's only an issue with the undercarriage because of gasoline and oil.
That's the way I was.
You have to have a separator, yeah, got it. Oh, and we don't, I just didn't understand that.
Sterling, uh, stir, no, Sturtel Coney. So it's a Coney, Sturtel Coney, and this was right on forty-four, two ninety-nine, so it's right at the same old, getting.
Where are the, where is that coming now?
So this company is out of Plainwell, Plainview, New York.
Plainview, okay.
Yep.
I know right here, and I believe there, you know, Malaysia, there's two or two, there's rotary. And, and, and they're pretty much local, so. Just, just, we can't, somebody to service them, because as good as they are, they do break.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you're absolutely right, which is why we wanted to. Because of that, in their role.
But then also really limited, also because the way those bikes work, they're pushing the buses by their wheels, just, they're limited to what kind of work they can perform on them, so.
It's the same amount, I just, you know, so the forty-five thousand won't matter for either of Rachel. And he's fine with either one, he said he can live with either one. Uh, his preference was Mohawk, but Coney, Sturtel Coney, so.
That's a question, what work will they perform, so you're right. Can't do brakes with sauce, will change. Can't do racing because you have to have the weight off the.
You gotta get to the wheels.
Gracing. Can't take outside, so. They're going to be strictly indoor lessons, you should send us, um, tasks to be performed with those lifts.
And I guess comparing their limited availability of use to actually the detailed repair list of what we've been doing in-house. See if, I mean, maybe we're not doing any of that in-house. So is it really a required lift?
For it, it asks them that, yes, there will be, and because this way they can use two buses.
I get it, but I guess I'm just wondering, um, as Rachel mentioned and Frank mentioned, you know, it's limited use of X, Y, and Z. If you look at, they have been now logging in the type of repair that they're doing in, correct?
Yeah.
Um, so I guess the comparison of how many of all of those type of repairs are, have they actually done, that this would come in handy?
Okay.
I get exactly what you're asking.
To support its purchase.
Yeah, I get exactly what you're pressing, so.
And I'm not going to be here, so. You can tell all of them.
Looking at the spreadsheet, you know, we have done X, Y, and Z, and with the lift, we can do X and Y. And therefore it matches, absolutely.
You know, is it justified, are you actually performing the task that it's going to be able to perform?
So I can put it together as a combination of what Frank and people said. Because Frank said, you know, the tasks to be performed, meaning the capacity of all that can be done with the following lifts. And among all these tasks, how many are tasks that we've already been doing on our big buses? And then, so I can, I can work on that and.
Just support the justification.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll work on this and create a document for both feet and send it to you. Absolutely.
I also talked to Joe about some of the stuff we should look to contract down by doing house. Ice motor. Yeah. We built an house and made a mistake. Motor scrap, you need. House, ice motor. That, and make sure, what's most cost effective, and what's the risk involved? And what's your potential loss? So what's the layer that's worth, anyone?
That's, I'm trying to figure out what they do, if any of them bust up on the lift, I mean, they must tie their one lift up for days on end. If they don't have a second lift, if they're needing parts to mend. So.
I think there's, there's enough, um, service that I think you need, that you have to do in the plate, don't take the wheels off.
Right.
Um, but it's something you gotta repair and exhaust. There's a lot of changes.
They were in the middle of something, and that, that lift is being taken up. Because they're waiting for something, they can't get the bus off. Because they're waiting for something, they can't get the bus off the lift. Have a second lift, it's really beneficial, just, yeah.
You're right, Rachel, because that, that would be a benefit of it.
Right, because you can be stuck, you can have a bus stuck on your lift for a week before your parts show up, and then you can't get off there. And you're also limited with those lifts, what you can do, so.
But it requires strategic thinking on their parts, and then as we progress then, of what tasks can be done, and so preparing this what the board has asked for, will actually help them to think in terms of, these are the tasks that I can do, and these are the tasks that can be done on these lifts. So maybe I should focus on these lifts for doing these tasks, rather than tie up the main lift for these kind of tasks. Because that way.
No, you're going to use A or you're going to use B, and.
Exactly. Switch between them, and work primarily off column lifts, and then whether these lifts are up to for someone to pass through.
As long as they're being used inside.
Well, I think that needs to be part of the resolution, need to bring in their lifts over. You start taking them outside, and if not flat, equal, and if you don't have enough support structure, air lever, the lifts will do this. So that's being foolish.
Or whether alone, you get compensation in the motherboards, you can just throw them away. With scrap.
A. These structures are interalloyed. This is strictly information following.
Information only for the board. Any questions the board has. There is nothing to work on in this, there is no question. I would have to take the pictures and documents.
But the first thing, you know, bro. Because you're backing up when you're sleeping. That going forward.
So based on what I'm reading here, what Cyril was looking to do is this would enable him to do more work in-house as opposed to hiring contractors. That's what he's.
You're right, Cheryl, that is one of the things we get. Also, the tractor that the act is twenty-five years old. And it can be done, and so therefore that, that was also one of the.
Well, it's a good time. Item one is really concerning what's going on, you know, that we play around with it.
Well, I did speak with Cyril a couple of times. There's some equipment, we've run it through, and those, and that will I've spoken with Cyril of all the upgrade. We're going to pick it up.
Looking at it's back by a list here, if we care, it should be done. Now we're looking to expand what we want to do in-house. Not any more people. So. Not a handshake here. And a list of the person else, and now we look to expand. So that's part of the question I'm looking at. But we'll take the information, now I didn't see a random.
Can we tell how long we know? Is the round has been in position there?
Since I've been there in case. Sorry, since I've been there in February. Has been in this affair, and I agree with the board, it's got to be fixed, it will be fixed. It will be fixed. This is a dawn year.
Yeah, information.
So that's the information I'm talking about. I expressed her concern when it set a precedent of outside organizations starting permanently putting on our property. Rachel and I drove by the library on the way home, on the way up there tonight. And I couldn't tell if they're utilizing their property, properties correctly versus just parking this, where the poles, I saw the poles down there. The airport is really safe, so. Anything that gets put on district property, there should be a plan, should be presented to the board. And not a surprise after the fact. Because when you say no, the organization's going to take them out. Way it is. Establish it, it's a good park, it's a safe park.
And here's the thing, you know, we're looking for spaces, we own that property for, for for our soccer players, where we don't have a lot of field space right now, at least, you know. We need that space, and it needs to be safe.
Were those poles right there?
No. I mean, you're, you're trying to find space, so it needs to stay as it was intended to. And I'm not sure how it ended up getting done without board approval.
There was some initial going on, if we, it was the director of the library itself. And then I got an invite that, you know, so I'm looking into it, and I'll make sure this doesn't happen again. In terms of, and just being put on our property, so.
I just think about all of our spatial issues right now, especially having field problems, and I'm like, God, we own it. We use it, you know.
It's that's in direct proximity to the soccer area, it does burden.
I think had it been presented to us, we probably could have worked a different, better out, a, a better plan, that it wouldn't be cringe on our spot.
Or just a safer way.
Oh, absolutely.
Always looking at other organizations, we take that very nice type of deal. Kids are using that, everyone's taking the easy way out, I want this, oh, we'll just pop it on your property. Prepare your own home first, you know, the library, well, safe, should have put a permanent structure up. Put a tent up, the kids are in a hot tent, and when it rains, it's wet underneath, they bought additional land to build a building to put the tent in. They're operating without a plan, don't bring it to the district.
Those posts will be moved out of the field area and different things. I've already told him, they are going to be moved, the director of the downtown library told her it will be moved. You know, and it's a matter of, can they be moved to a place where it is safe for our kids to play, like behind the doorpost? Or is it gone, gone, bye-bye, and those are the decisions. But, you know, going back to what you said, Cheryl, you know, there are two things I need to address. One is, how did this happen without a building use form? Because we need insurance and building use forms, so that never happened, as far as I know. So I'm going to look into that. But the other part is, for the square walk itself, I've told the director of the library that it needs, it's going to be moved. Because right now it is in the field, and we can't have that. I didn't tell her where we're going to move the two, because we have to, if it can be moved, if there is no safe place, then it can be put in.
Do we want to start allowing other groups to park stuff on our property? Because once you allow it, then you're going to have a precedent set. While you did it for this group, now why can't you do it for the other group?
You can't take that fast once it's done.
So it's nice, but isn't the right precedent to set?
Well, I think we were very specific about when we sold the Steven Town property, sold the draft. What it was intended for.
Especially Steven Town, that was, that was a ordeal, remember going, you know, we kept insisting, we wanted that, that whole chunk on the side, and.
We, we have to go to court.
Yeah.
By the original.
Yes, yes.
Sale person. So there's commitments now, what these are intended for. And that is really need to stay. Because the board took a pound in closing those schools. We made commitments, community. Now, if people want to change, they have to go back. They didn't walk in our shoes.
Yes, oh, it is, it's a great idea, it really is, I mean that.
But then you, and you want to work with. That's, that's, that's the piece, the piece is, it wasn't all thought out.
Well, the piece was, there was no communication and cooperation.
Nobody asked permission, they just did it. Right, and I, and I think that's probably Katie's point, and that would certainly be my point. Is that with any of these, you know, we want to make it clear, it's not that we don't want to work, you know, allow it, but we want to work together to establish the best and the safest means for both groups.
And it's possible, it's possible that they thought that that was occurring, but unfortunately, the board didn't know anything about it. Because.
Communication break down, so.
Right.
Same token. Library have good intentions. Then who's going to maintain it? The pressure you get on there, you're not supposed to have that on fields. And who's going to maintain it? You know, in five years, will we maintain, or it's going to fall over, because it'll analyze it, it doesn't get fixed. Now, everyone has good intentions, once it's done, they walk away, and then the district has the liability.
Well, or, you know, in this particular case, the fencing, if some kids decide to use it as a catwalk, and get up and walk across, while up and break an arm, it's on district property. So then we are now liable, and it wouldn't be the first time that a family has sued us for a kid breaking an arm on district property, you know. Was still unintentional in an accident, and yet still possibly is.
Which is why the building use form and insurance.
But that's a use form, it's not permanent construction on our property. It's really not the right form. They want permanent construction.
That needs to be more of a communication, and a sit-down.
They want to use it for the weekend, that's the deal, but that's, what I saw with the ribbon funding, that's a permanent. So what can happen is an orange is here.
I've already sent to them. I'm going to skip over it. I have two options, I can either say no, we're not doing this, and I'll hold off on this. Then we have more conversation. Or do you have look for, if we would just lay it out here on the doorpost back?
But then they're never going to use it.
That's very well, never use it.
I think my suggestion would be to sit down and have a conversation and come up with several different options, not just us sitting here with the options. And then bring them back to the board, certainly take down the initial safety hazard immediately. But then have some conversations about how it could be done differently, better, where it's, you know. And maybe it will be on district property and maybe it won't, but then bring those options back to the board and see how the board behaves. And then move forward with that after there's.
I was going to say, this taxpayer, I think you bring up a valid point, though, it's a square boat trail, is there one on the library's property? Because if not, then why not, before you decide to.
I think it needed to be a sit-down and, you know, an active discussion, patient about the plan. If they're going to imprint on district property, like, what is it looking like, and, you know, is that okay?
And that's what's going to happen, once you get permission, you put it there, and that's, you know, now they've changed it. How many times have I seen board resolutions, rapid back, people have done it, it's what they pleased, it's changed. And, and I mean, the library needs to put a trail on their thing, because it's with the library, it makes sense. And they have the property, they need to get their property in order, and yes, it costs money, the district spent money to do it. Now we have a nice parcel, they'll just come and pop it on ours. Because then you get the responsibility and the headaches when stuff goes wrong.
Sure, establish now that it needs to be a discussion, if anyone, not whatever happened. And at a board level, to bring it back to a board level, I think. It's frustrating, I can tell you, as a board member, when some things go on in the community, and then the community owner says, oh, you know, the board voted on it, and we're like, we don't know what you're talking about, that's when it becomes problematic. Because it looks like we're not working together for, for the district.
You don't want to look like, oh, look, and sort us, and then all of a sudden, now you're getting, this has to be pulled down.
Right, so either way, it makes us look bad, either way.
You can barter from a lot of different groups, I want to put this on your property, I want to put that, everything has got a good reason. Where do you draw the line? So we did make a commitment to the communities, we're very specific, we've got good properties. You have to finish the dedication of Granton, get past the voice gals to help cut the trails in there, make it possible and everything.
And I agree, I think this is one thing, the actual physical structure.
Five years, might have twenty poles down there, we only grew thirteen.
Then it's a spot gate event.
Well, good intentions, but compromising the district's flexibility.
And again, I'm sure, Joe, you're going to, but I mean, we, we want to work with you, but.
But there has to be a way with you.
Right, right.
And it couldn't just be a misunderstanding. You know, that they thought the district was on board.
Well, the misunderstanding was, they thought they were outside, but.
But still on district property.
Yes. So, yeah, so there were a couple of misunderstandings that I want to cover, so I'm sure that.
Kind of like putting up a fence on your neighbor's property, you know, and then saying, oh, you're, you're good with this, right?
And one of the washer has to be drawn, and the spare trees need to be cut back to the original fence line, there is a nice channel in that. That needs, because it's growing into the field, so maintenance. The backstop down there, you've got a contractor who lives right next to it, a hundred bucks, he'd brush it, and maybe for a little bit more, he'd take all the trees down, that's what they do if you walk it. Eat field as big as possible. There's contractors there that can, minimal cost, you don't tire your people. Okay, so. Anything else? We've covered a lot of areas, a lot of notes. We've covered a lot of areas, a lot of notes. I'm just happy the reserves are done, transfers are done, office can operate.
I think you also have a feeling, especially with all of our new administrators, we need to schedule a retreat.
But we will be talking about that pre-organization.
All right, excellent, just so that we're all, you know, we're all on the same page.
Not a lot of pre-orientation, too.
And I would just like to make a parting comment. As a former student here at Garland for thirteen years, and an employee for twenty-three, and a board member for six, that's forty-two years of my life here at Garland, and so it's kind of bittersweet that I'm leaving. But I've enjoyed my stint here at the board, and I wish everybody continued to discuss and bringing Garland to a better place.
Your knowledge, your expertise, everything you've brought us has been phenomenal, I think.
I can tell my husband tonight was kind of, because you know, we're not going to be back to this area, you know, I don't have children, I didn't run for the board with any, you know, agenda, I just did it because I've grown up here, I'm in school here, I worked here, and I. Thank you for the opportunity.
We expect to see you at fault fest.
And next meeting will be organization meeting, why six? I need motion for a discussion. We'll set track, you're free to go.